Cindy, roll call, please.
Durenfeld.
Here.
Mickelson. Anderson.
Yes.
Poggy Weaver.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Yish.
Here.
Burkhardt.
Here.
De Phillips.
Here.
I'm not voting yet.
The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Yish.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
De Phillips.
Yes.
Durenfeld.
Yes. Motion passed. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have three items under the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Evans.
Yes.
Yish.
Yes.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
De Phillips.
Yes.
Durenfeld.
Yes.
Anderson.
Aye.
Motion passed. Moving on to the next item, which is a closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Section 20.17.3, providing for the strategy, providing for the strategy meetings of the public employees for collective bargaining. Do I have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Cindy, vote, please.
Yish.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Yes.
De Phillips.
Yes.
Durenfeld.
Yes.
Anderson.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion passed. We don't, are we going to record it?
It is recorded.
Oh. We are now in closed session. Cindy, roll call, please.
Durenfeld.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Yish.
Here.
Burkhardt.
Here.
De Phillips.
Here.
You're up.
All right, well, good afternoon, everybody. Mike Galloway with Ullers and Cooney, representing, obviously, the city of Johnston for a lot of years in labor and employment matters and now working with the district in their labor negotiations. We have started the process. We've received the initial proposal from the union. And I would say that as staff that was there, I think we were pleasantly surprised that it was much more reasonable than what the last year ago proposal was. We also then gave our initial proposal and we are scheduled to meet next week, the 18th, 20th, and 21st, to attempt to get into nego, for negotiations. If we don't, we have mediation scheduled the week of January. I keep looking at Cindy because she, it's sometime in mid to early January and then arbitration would be following that. The process is, as we go through this, we exchange initial proposals. We go into negotiations. If negotiations are not successful, we'll go into mediation. That'll be with a mediator assigned from the federal mediation and conciliation services. It'll be Jim Ticky because he's basically the only one from FMCS that covers the state of Iowa. And then if we are unable to get an agreement there, we will go to binding arbitration. We have yet to go there in all the years that we've been doing this, so we are hoping to do that. I've updated the Johnston council in a closed session. And oh, there's the independent impasse agreement. And so we hope, once again, like I said, we're not super far away. It's once again going to be a money issue and trying to get to the comparability and how we can do that and be physically conservative, or, you know, probably not the right word, but is physically manage it for both the cities as much as we possibly can. We estimate, and it continues to be that way, we're off about 10 to 12% in our base hourly wage rates from the comparability group that we tend to use, which is the metro communities that have full-time fire departments. We don't use the city of Des Moines, obviously, because of the size, but we tend to look at the suburban communities. We tend to, in the process, once we try to reach an agreement with the union, we will bring it back to the respective boards and councils to get an agreement to say, hey, we believe this is what it will take to get a voluntary agreement. We're going to try to get a multi-year agreement. Last time was the first time that we really had a one-year and I think ever, basically, since the inception of the department, working with Johnston and now that it's a group, so I'm cautiously optimistic based on the initials that we can get there. There'll still have to be a little give and take as it should be in the negotiations, but hopefully we can reach a voluntary agreement. So, I'll open it up to questions. That's kind of the process where we're at right now. And if there are questions, thoughts, comments, I'm here to see if I can answer.
Mike, can you talk through with the fireboard on the, what they presented and what at least our initial proposal to them was?
Yeah, so, I mean, do you want to, Mike, you don't want me to go through all these little language changes, do you?
No, I don't think we need to go through the language.
The good thing, I would say on a lot of the language, we're already in agreement on. It was with the chief and the administration. They've kind of worked through and what they proposed are things that we were going to propose on language anyway. As it relates to wages, what the employer has proposed is a three-year contract at 6%, 5%, 4%. What we're seeing is trend data is about four to four and a half. So I say that because when we're looking at comparable cities, anytime that move up in the rankings, right, we have to do more than four. Otherwise, we're just holding fast to where we're at. They proposed somewhere in the first year of like 10 to 12%, I believe, was to get them up. To, what was it, Mike?
10.9.
Yeah, because they didn't break it out. They just gave us a wage schedule.
Yeah.
And it was 10.9. And so that's why I say I'm cautiously optimistic that that's where we it can get. Insurance shouldn't be an issue because we've settled our other public safety. And now that these employees will be on the Johnston insurance, insurance should not be an issue any longer because they've already adopted what the police have in their contract. So usually in these negotiations, wages and insurance are the two big issues. Insurance is really off the table. So it's really kind of a wage negotiation. As far as other big issues, Mike, they still want to be having the guaranteed two times, two people off. We're still proposing and maintaining that that's a permissive subject. And we're waiting also on a ruling for purb on that.
You want to update the fireboard, like what we've done?
Yeah, so it's sitting with the purb board now as of December 4th or 5th. And we have not yet get, to get a ruling on that. We're determining whether that's considered staffing as a permissive subject or if it's a mandatory subject under vacations and leaves. There's a long history of case law at the Public Employment Relations Board that would tell you that this should be permissive. But the Public Employment Relations Board, and when I use the word permissive, let me take a step back. That means either party can remove it from the contract without the other party being able to contest that it has to stay in. That's why it's important. The Public Employment Relations Board has went through a huge change. They're merging with another agency at this point. They no longer have administrative law judges. They used to have a whole, I think about eight, six to eight administrative law judges just assigned to purb. They have been sent to the Department of Inspection and Appeals. And so, and the whole board has no history. There's nobody that's new on the three-member purb board that's ever been in this area. So it's kind of difficult when even for filing things and things like that, it's been kind of difficult. But we're hoping to hear on that issue. I would tell you, though, we've had concerns about the overtime that this creates, but when we look at this as a joint department and as one employer, the numbers aren't near as bad when we start, our overtime, when we compare to some of the other departments that we are. It's actually relatively in line, but as we grow, it's still something that we need to keep an eye on. Besides that, Mike, any other things that you were thinking of that were, or chief that you saw in the initial that were, were Cindy, Teresa, anybody? That were like big issues? I think we're really down to those kind of two major things.
I would say from my perspective, I mean, I think it's hard for us to say to like a 10.9% increase. But we know that's at least to our comparables, we, I believe, that that's how far we're below. You know, and really taking guidance from Mike Galloway on that. But I think is there a way we can work through a multi-year contract to get us in line to make it more affordable, I think is important. Because I think long-term, we're going to, we're going to continue to have recruitment issues. I think all departments are seeing recruitment issues. I think there's some reasons we're appealable that people, you know, like to be in the Johnston Grimes Fire Department, but ultimately, you know, we've had people recently start, and I'm looking at the chief now. We've had people start and literally have walked away within a couple of weeks because, you know, they're just saying the wages aren't, you know, they have, they're taking financial pay cuts to come work here. And so, you know, we're, we're not attracting a big pool of candidates long-term. And, you know, if we don't have that, we can't get the staffing. We're not, we're not able to provide that service long-term. So I think that'd be my comments on it.
I have just a couple, just a couple of things in their initial proposal that our, our immediate response was going to be no. But know that they'll, they always ask for these types of things and they'll probably keep pushing back on them. They wanted to ask for numerous out-of-classification pays, where they get an extra dollar for doing this or an extra 50 cents for doing that or something like a firefighter in charge, a master driver, a lead paramedic. They wanted a promote, promoted master engineer position. They want it longevity. So these were called supplemental pays or additional pays. They asked for several of those. And one thing they asked for, and I don't know, Grimes, if you could confirm this for me, I think I heard this, but they've asked for paternity leave and apparently, do you offer paternity leave for other?
Yes.
Employees? And we don't offer that in Johnston, so we didn't, we didn't go back with it in our initial proposal, but do know that they asked for that as well.
And I think one of the things we've talked internally, at least on paternity leave, I don't think we necessarily want to put a set hours in paternity leave, and this is probably more from Johnston's viewpoint. I think what we'd like to propose is that if the city would offer paternity leave in the future to our employees, then we'd offer the same benefit to firefighters. So that we're not, I think we can think through it more and come up with more of a logical plan. But I think the other side of that coin is they get a very rich PTO plan.
Yeah, well, just a quick point of clarification. They do not get parental leave in Grimes. Their subject, I mean, that's a handbook provision and we've taken the position that if it's not been negotiated for in part of the union contract, we don't offer it to them. And, and no, that, that is true, Teresa. That's the case. But the firefighters have never gotten it. And it's also the case that our, our non-union employees don't get the same amount of PTO accruals that our firefighters do. So they already get more leave than, and just on an ongoing continual basis than our non-union employees that, you know, if they have a child, get parental leave. So it's not, it's not an apples-to-apples
And I think, I think that's why, you know, we're going to be very cautious as we go down that because, again, we get a lot of PTO leave. I just had to fill out a survey for the city manager group. I think you probably did it too, Jake. And, you know, when I put down the amount of leave, it's like even I pause, like, man, that's a lot of leave. I don't take that much leave. It's still afforded to me as an employee.
I will add too, on the parental leave subject, there are a number of metro cities that are looking at implementing parental leave. So it is becoming a normal kind of thing. At some point, and my guess is in the not-too-distant future, it probably will be a mandated kind of a thing. So we're looking at it, we're talking about it. But to Mike's, Mike Galloway's point, well, if we deem to include it in the contract, it will simply say in line with other, that, we're not going to give them specific parental leave and no one else in the city is getting it. But if we happen to implement it before their contract term is up, we're not going to keep them from it either. So as part of a negotiation, I mean, they want to give that up for two-off or something, then maybe, but it, it is becoming more, more widespread in that, in the
Yeah, I just saw a survey that went out the other day.
I did, I did one too.
Okay.
Maybe stepping back from that issue a little bit, just more broadly about your presentation. I, I mean, maybe food for thought. I don't know that I object, but I would argue maybe some reservation around around a multi-year agreement. I understand the need for that in terms of managing a relationship. But you know, we've got a new property tax law and we, that, and its implementation coincides with 20% valuation increases in Polk County. That will not be the case next year when we're budgeting and, you know, the year after that. So I don't, I don't know exactly what that suggests in terms of our ability to to afford a multi-year agreement. But there's just competing interests there and I'm just pointing out maybe what those competing interests are. And at some point, this conversation and the next conversation on the agenda is to include ambulance rates. We've got to start finding ways to connect and contextualize these discussions back to our property tax rates. I don't think it's too difficult to back in to what we're levying for property taxes to support the fire department. And insofar as these proposals suggest tax increases, I think we need to, in terms of governance, provide the fireboard with that information. And I don't, I don't know that today we're really in a spot where we can do that. But it's a pretty important concept that has got to get linked to these discussions because I, I don't know that that I fully accept, like all of the comps that we use. Because again, our PTO accrual is not an industry standard in the metro. It's not, we're, the same is true of our 4896 shift. And there are other components to these jobs that make them attractive.
Yeah.
But for what, what that's worth, I just those are just
Just as informational, though, and I was just in Urbandale doing their contracts the other day. And one of the things we were looking at, because Urbandale implemented a supervisory management, new vacation schedule. And of course, the union wanted that and we said no. But one of the things that we did was they're on, everybody else in the metro for any union is on a vacation sick leave. They're not on a PTO schedule. Unless maybe Waukees, I can't comment on them. But what we looked at was, and I found this very interesting, and our comps, we use Johnston Grimes, right? But obviously, as it relates to vacation, we put not applicable because they're on a PTO, but we use Des Moines, West Des Moines, Clive, Waukees. And after 15 years or 18 years, this is just vacation. Is over 300 hours per year. In, in Urbandale, it's 336. Your PTO, which is a combination of vacation and sick, the most they can accrue is 408. So to put that in context, you're not, I get it's a lot of time, but it's not out of, when you're just talking vacation, that's what the other places are getting that have full-time fire departments. So just know that, those kind of facts. And, and obviously, for your department, 4896 clearly has some really good benefits, I think. What I would tell you, though, is, and you're not a 411 city, and when I use 411, that's the civil service and the, they can only work a 24-hour by statute under Iowa Code Chapter 411. And so in the metro, you are the only 4896. Now, that is clearly, at least to your employees, but when you get in the industry, right? The typical is 2448. And so if a firefighter is coming from, pick another one, and they're going to a 4896, I think we see it as a benefit. I don't know that other employees. And the reason I would say that to you is, is because I can sit at a bargaining table for a police contract. I use this as a comparison. And every police department, including Johnston's, wants the West Des Moines police schedule. They, I hear it every time we have a contract over whether it's Urbandale, Altoona, wherever. So I think we have to be objective when we're looking at it and take in and synthesize all of those facts and figures to say, okay, there is benefits clearly, but sometimes we got to make sure that we're looking at that through the scope. And, and I agree. I think that people get a lot of leave, especially in fire departments when they are working very limited number of shifts anyway, nine to 10 days a month, right? But that's who you are competing with too. And they're doing the same thing. And so I, I just throw that out as just kind of somebody who sees a lot of this as to what I'm seeing out there.
I want to throw out a couple of things, but I'm not looking for a big debate or solution. One thing I'm very curious about is the timing on this. And maybe I missed the last meeting, so maybe, maybe I missed something there that I didn't realize. I always find it curious that, oh, we've gone and put this out on the table, but did this board have a discussion about what we're putting on the table? And like saying, we, we will not go over this percent or we have this cap or whatnot. I feel like that's a discussion we should be having if we haven't been. I find that a little bit dissatisfying. Because like it sounds like, oh, we made an offer. Oh, great. Well, that's the bare minimum, whether I agreed with it or not. Second thing is with the comparables, I, I full-heartedly agree. If our base isn't comparable, we should make our base comparable. But I would counter on that if all of the auxiliary things, you know, talking about master driver, and if those aren't comparable, then the base maybe doesn't need to be there if we're better. Maybe our scale caps out higher and quicker. I don't know, but I, you know, I think those things, we should have clarity and all that before we say, oh, we just need to make the base the same. And I would go as far to say, and I don't, maybe the rest of the board disagrees, if we want to make this battle easier, I think we should not do the 48. I think we should go to 12 like everybody else and then it is comparable. And I think that's a move we should make eventually for various reasons. I know current staff might disagree with that. But just throwing it out there. Again, not looking for a debate and a solution right now.
Dave, or Councilman, I don't, I don't want to debate you either. And so, but I'll go, I'll be the one that kind of apologizes to you, I guess. That, that is why we're here tonight, is to get parameters from you. So we do know what to do when we go back to the table regarding our initial proposal. As our initial proposal, we, we, Johnston staff did talk to our, our council finance committee, but that was about it. And we were, and we were starting with what we thought was the lowest, fairest, reasonable number we could start with, going back to them based on where we ended our negotiations last year. That's all we were doing. I apologize. But that is why we're here tonight, is to get parameters from you folks before we sit down and really start negotiating through things.
And just for some clarification, so when the master and all of those things, they don't have them. They're asking to put those in their contract because they're looking at the other departments that have them. So we have proposed not to put them in and because we're focusing just on the wage issue. Those are all promotional ranks within other departments within the city, like they have engineers that are just drivers. They have
We have some of that, though. I know we do, because I remember approving some of those things before.
They're not a permanent promotion.
Temporary, but have they ever stopped?
I mean, we don't, we don't pay anyone today under our contract in Johnston for any of that, correct?
We have some stipends, but we don't have promotional ranks.
Okay.
You would never lock anybody back out of that? So it effectively is
On a particular shift, right.
I think one thing on, you know, if we switched away from a 2448-hour rotation from our current 4896, I mean, first of all, we'd have to negotiate that. You know, they can refuse to negotiate on that. And we'd have to go to arbitration. What would be our likelihood of getting it out in arbitration?
Hours change is a mandatory subject and you'd have to negotiate that out. The chances of an arbitrator awarding a change in hours is very unlikely.
And then Chief Clark, how many, how many firefighters do we currently have that live a fair distance away from the stations? So, I mean, but then we, we have some that live substantial distances away. And so I think we, we do attract candidates that choose us, that, that drive hours away. And even if we could magically force a 2448-hour shift, we probably would lose firefighters over that.
I was just going to say, I, you bring up very fair and valid points. That was the one that gave me heartburn, just given, there's been several firefighters I've spoken with personally. That is a big deal, a big pull for them. And some people have come here for that. They also stay here because of that, knowing they're making less money. Verbatim said out of their own mouths. That's what gives me a little heartburn to hear that one. The other point's very, I, I'm very fair and valid to ask. That one, I, I don't know that I feel overly comfortable with.
I think, like, what, I think, again, the purpose tonight is trying to get some, some guidance from the fireboard on, you know, we know that the proposal was 10, 4, 5 from the firefighters. And then it was, our first initial proposal was 6, 5, 4. You know, I think 10.9 in year one is, is probably difficult for anyone to swallow. You know, and so is there, you know, and I value, and I'm not trying to be contrarian to Jake, you know, I value the multi-year contract because I think, I look at it, we go six months getting ready to go do contract negotiations. We do contract negotiations and then there's heartburn for six months. I'd rather get out of that and develop relationship with the firefighters. I think there's a lot of discussion we want to take on, on strategic planning and really getting into fire models and, and service, level of service, which I'd rather focus on that than, than get back into a long-protracted union, union negotiation. So, you know, is there a path forward of saying, okay, you know, what's the board's desire of? Do you want a one-year contract? Do you want multi-year? And then if you want multi-year, you know, what is that wage parameter you guys would feel comfortable with?
I mean, Mike, that's well taken. I, don't take me wrong. Like, I'm not opposed to a multi-year contract. I, I think for the sake of relationships, it matters. I just am saying, like, I don't exactly know what the budget looks like next year. It's going to be a lot tougher discussion and, and this will obligate us. But I think, I mean, the other thing is, we talked, I don't know, between the chief and Mike and I, two weeks ago. I mean, I was hoping that we could come into the discussion tonight with some recommendations so that we could say, hey, fireboard, this is what we think makes sense for parameters. And I, I just, I, I don't know that that we have arrived at that, or if we have, it has that we have arrived at that, or if we have, it hasn't come out in this discussion yet. I don't. I mean, I just, it's super hard to to say, yeah, do this or that without understanding what it does with the property tax rate. Because I think that at the end of the day, it, I mean, if, if given them the ten point nine percent doesn't change, or if based on valuation increases, if the levy rate that supports the fire department goes down, I don't know that we care in Grimes. Not to speak for you guys, but like, that's just, I just don't, like, until we contextualize this discussion with that information, I don't know how to draw out of the Fire Board some sort of. I, I, I just don't know what we're looking for, I guess. But that's, that's how I wrestle with the question that's been posed.
Jake, in our prior discussion, that was one of the concerns that we expressed too. It's, it's hard to agree to any percentage if you don't know what the dollar amount is attached to it and what the impact is going to be. So how do we get there? I mean, how do we? Looking at the finance people, how do we?
So is the process kind of mistimed then? Like, it really shouldn't start till later?
Well, Teresa, I don't, I don't, I, I know it's not perfect and it's not final, but we've got a valuation projection from PFM. And I would, I would imagine you do. I mean, that would, like, we, we, I, this afternoon, I shared like some super, I'm not saying it's sophisticated. It's some super rough math. I tried to share with, with staff today, like, how we were backing into, because if you just, it's not super complicated, right? Like, I can take the, the fire department budget in Grimes today. I can subtract out the township contributions and the ambulance rates and arrive at a number that I can apply against our valuation to tell you what the levy rate is that supports the fire department. And you could do the same with the combined budget based on the fire formula. For the combined budget and and you could get to a spot where you say, hey, in Grimes, for your share, you got to levy a certain dollar amount, and Johnston, you got to levy a certain dollar amount. And, and then, then all of a sudden, I feel like this is a discussion that is much more meaningful. But that's just my perspective. Others might have a different way to come at this. I don't.
While Teresa's looking at spreadsheets, um, one of the things I will add, while not discounting the financial impact and the tax levy impact, a couple of things, our other two unions are on multi-year agreements that, um, if we did a three-year.
I'm sorry, Cindy, I'm having a tough time hearing you.
I'm sorry.
Your face is behind your screen, so I can't read your lips.
I'm sorry. Sorry. Is this better? Our other two unions are on multi-year agreements. Going with a three-year agreement with the fire department would put them on the same cycle as the other two unions. While not the be-all, end-all, it is helpful from a negotiation standpoint. It's helpful from a, from a morale perspective. The fact that we are by comps that we've run somewhere in the ten to twelve percent range below comps. We had a compensation study done. They also came back with firefighters are twelve percent below. One-year deals, we are, we are essentially, unless you're giving them a twelve percent in a one-year deal, we will never gain ground. We will continue to just be kind of trailing along with the rest of the metro. That has, you know, a cost to it. We train and then they move on to Des Moines or West Des Moines. That's money. That's time. Those are, those have val, those things have value. So it's not just can we afford it in this tax levy rate that we're at or what we need to be. It's a, to me, a little bigger picture. We have to be able to attract. We have to be able to retain. We have to be able to compete with the other metro cities. One-year deals, unless we're giving them a big jump in that one-year deal, just keep kicking the can down the road.
And Cindy, I hear what you're saying. You know, we want to, we want to be able to recruit and retain good quality can, or employees, no doubt about that. What I'm struggling with is, you know, we, we want to at least stay even, you know, in, in, we're, you know, at the end of the day, we want them to at least be even. And we want to make up some of that ground that they are behind. And over time, maybe get to the point where they're, where they're at the same place as, as everyone else in, in the metro area. The problem I'm having is, um, you know, I look at these numbers, six, five, four, ten, four, five. What do I do? Just kind of split the bit, you know, the difference? It's like, yeah, go, go do that. I mean, I, I don't, I don't, you know, I don't have any, I don't have the information to give, you know, informed advice on that.
I'd also, yeah, and it, I, I'd kind of like to see numbers like, well, if you did a ten, four, or five, like, here's what the table looks like with the base salaries, and here's how those shift and what they look like, and then how they compare after three years. Are we still short after three years or are we actually caught up? Like, I mean, what's this actually truly do? And then to Jake's point, like, and then also, I don't know, yeah, I just, I'm because that, that's what I would do with any other department in the city is I, I'd want, I want to know those same things and like, rather than just going.
I mean, it's, I, this isn't, this isn't a fully formed and thought out thing, but based on a few assumptions, I mean, based in the, in the budget that the chief submitted that we'll talk about later. I mean, in the, in an ERP contribution, I mean, all, all of the things on the agenda tonight are going to lead to a fifty-seven and a half cent increase on the levy rate in Grimes. Or you got to defund other departments.
Well, but, but the assumption that spreadsheet you sent out this morning, I mean, at least the dollar amount you had for the capital improvement program, that we wouldn't issue one year of, I mean, first of all, there's a, there's a ladder truck in there. So, you know, we're not going to issue levy to pay for ladder truck in one year. We're going to issue debt.
Mike, it is admittedly a napkin sketch, uh, at best. I, it's just.
I mean, if you, if you take the, the capital improvement out, uh, the levy rate for Grimes actually goes down.
Yeah, but.
Nine cents next year.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think there's a one, one-time expense in there that's pretty unique.
Right, but that's, I mean, that, that needs to be, we need to spend more time with that.
Yeah. I think, Sarah, you have put together a financial analysis on this, correct?
On base salaries only, and the ten, five, four would, or ten, four, five, I think is what he just said. That would get us within two hundred dollars on the paramedic in the third year. But that would then be a nearly thirteen percent increase next year, seven percent the following year, nearly eight percent the third year from combined, combined groups or, you know, cities.
And what, what is that in dollars between the three years?
A sixty-three percent increase of one point four million dollars.
Increase?
Yes.
Is that, is that?
Over three years. That's, that's over three years.
Over three years.
Okay. But then also, that is, that is combined for all
Yes.
the district now. We could, in essence, apply the formula roughly to figure out what that increase would be. To a.
I have that as well. On the current formula, that would be compounding for Johnston, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand over the three years compounding, and then for Grimes, that would be five hundred and forty-seven thousand. Yes, over the three years.
But that's just the wage increases. It doesn't.
That is just wage increases. That does not include additional pay.
Additional firefighters.
Additional firefighters. That does not include health insurance, all of those additional costs.
I, I think the other, the reality, we also have to step back is, you know, we could, you know, we could say, you know, we can't agree. We're going to do, we're only going to offer a three percent. You end up going into arbitration and, you know, there's a big unknown there. And certainly, I don't know if I want to ask you to speculate, but what would you speculate if we went into arbitration?
It's hard, Mike, right? I mean, what we're seeing in the industry is arbitrators have not been willing to award a high position. And remember, when you go to arbitration, i- it, it's hard to speculate because I don't know what they would go in with in a one-year, right? So I can't tell you that if they went in at five percent, then I'd say there's a relatively good chance that they're going to get five. Because if you say the trend that we look at statewide is four and a quarter, well, they're only asking to make up three quarters of a percent if we all acknowledge, which we have publicly, um, or at least in the negotiations, they're off ten to twelve percent. But if they go in and try to get ten percent, I don't think that the likelihood of an arbitrator awarding that is going to happen. So it's kind of difficult to anticipate what they're going to do because they haven't acted as the fire department, at least in my experience with Johnston, has acted in the past, right? We've known for a long time that we have been behind, and we've tried to make inroads modestly over the course of when we started to have a full-time fire department. The problem is, is we got kind of caught, uh, to a certain extent, when we had a longer-term agreement and there was a huge in, the inflation and the inflation in wages that we saw in lots of different positions. And so not addressing this a long time ago has, continues to come to this point that we are at today. And to be quite honest, they've kind of started to draw the line.
So, Mike, you have meetings scheduled for next week. What do you think the expectation is of that meeting? Is it, is the expectation, you know, we go in with our offer, they go in with their offer, and then we come to an agreement?
Uh, Mayor, it's a great question. Uh, my expectation, and I, I think it's shared by staff, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, because we've worked together long enough, is to figure out exactly what they will settle for. What is in a voluntary agreement? What does that look like for them? And then bringing it back to the council and to the, the Fire Board and say, okay, we believe, we would not sign a tentative agreement. We'd say, hey, we think this is beyond our authority. And then we can put some pencil to paper and answer a lot of what Jake's been asking.
But we don't have to counter in this meeting. I mean, if, the, the, the goal would be for them to be clear about what they think they need.
Right.
And then you would bring that back to us.
Correct. That's what we're hoping to get.
So you don't necessarily need.
I don't have to come in and go, I'm going to do eight, 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 whatever the numbers are, Mayor, right? We need to get, and, and to be very upfront with them, we're going to talk about the property tax, HR seven eighteen. We're going to talk about some of these issues and say, okay, guys, let's have a real honest conversation of what a multi-year contract look like, looks like.
Well, then you'd bring that back to us.
Correct.
We'd have an opportunity to understand what the impact of it is.
Absolutely. I think that's the best way to move this forward.
Well, Mayor, whether we're comfortable or not, that's the next step. So I think, and, and I think we kind of all eagerly await, uh, with that bated breath, what that, you know, what they're going to come back with. And, and then we kind of go from there and we can start applying, uh, you know, some, some math to it. I, I want to be on record in front of everybody, even in closed session here, that my personal feeling is we, we got to close that gap, all right? And, and I, and I don't sense that anyone is happy with our status quo any further. I, I appreciate Mike kind of laying it out as bluntly as possible. We've caused this problem over time by not closing that gap sooner. A multi-year agreement will help us be able to close that gap, but spread it out so it's maybe a little less painful. I think to some extent, we don't know how this legislation is truly going to impact things. But we've also made a lot of decisions in our past incorporated histories as cities with really the best guesses we had with valuations, without knowing what type of legislation may be coming down the pipe that may either erode or eradicate some of the decisions that we've made with developers and with other long-term debt type obligations. And so consequently, we need to understand that these are people. These are employees of ours who are doing a service that none of us can do. And quite frankly, I want to make sure that they continue to get a living wage, but also a very competitive wage so that we have the absolute best serving our communities. And, and the realization is that we're not trying to treat them like commodities or less.
Is anybody concerned about the multi-year?
I am a little bit, to some, the reasons that Jake pointed out. But if you stuck to six, five, four, I think that's a good place to be at a multi-year that I don't, I don't know if I'd be as concerned because to your point, that's roughly what's been happening, plus a little bit on top in those first two years, you know?
Honestly, David, even what they're asking for in years two and, two and three are not that far removed, right? It's just inverted.
Yeah, but I understand compounding in the big ten upfront's going to be more longer, but, um. Yeah, so I mean, three years at six, five, four, I think I could swallow that, but I'm, I'm guessing, but we'll see. I'm guessing they're not. And anything above that, it's going to start making me nervous, I feel like. But it just depends on how much more, I suppose.
I would have concerns with ten point nine. I think that's, that's not palatable. Well, you know, I think internally, what, what I would say Johnston staff has talked about, and I think we ran numbers on it, is something like eight, six, six. It, it kind of smooths out, get us, gets us to where we think at the end of three years, gets us to market. Um, but it does it over multi-years. Certainly, I think with the new property tax legislation, reality is, I don't think they're done. I think next year they won't do anything. I think that's kind of what I'm hearing now, things what Steve is hearing. But I think the following year, there's, there quite possibly will be a follow-up bill. There's going to be a cleanup bill this year because there's some issues they found that just have to be cleaned up. Or there's six cities in Iowa that will never have property taxes ever again. There, there is, I, I think I share with Jake the concern that, you know, the legislature has determined property taxes isn't a good method to fund cities. And that's unfortunate because that's been our main tool to, to provide services. So we're going to have to figure out how we do revenue diversification to augment how we provide services. But, you know, I do, I do feel that recruitment's going to get more difficult. It's not going to get easier. And if we keep lagging, even if you have this, the shifts we have, reality is if you're twenty-four, forty-eight, or forty-eight, ninety-six, you're still working the same number of hours every year. You get the benefit that you have a bigger block of time off in your scheduling. You're still providing the same number of hours as any other agency out there. Certainly, you can take vacation for two days and have even a lo, larger block, which I think that's a huge benefit for our, our employees. Uh, but they still put the same amount of time in than any other agency out there. Um, and I, I come from the viewpoint of, you know, I don't, I never want to be the leader on pay, and this doesn't get us to be the leader of pay, but it puts us in that midpoint. I think that's at least philosophy I've always had, that I, I don't, I don't want to be the lowest paid. I don't want to be the highest paid. So that, that's what I would throw out there. And I, I mean, if there's a big concern of eight, six, six, you know, and I know I haven't seen financial numbers, but, um, I think at least that's one thing I would propose.
I guess I just think like as city staff, we can do a lot more to contextualize this discussion for the board. I think we can bring the. Yeah, Teresa, like, that was a, that was me kind of like jumping on Marsha to say, hey, I, I, we got a discussion this afternoon. I gotta have some way to frame this and. Yeah, I, but like, if, in all seriousness, if our levy rate's going down, give them the ten percent. I don't care. But I, and, and then, then we've got nothing to talk about, uh, when we get to this place three years down the road. But I, here's the thing, I just, I, I, I think that that analysis, Teresa, can get a lot more sophisticated than what I sketched out on the back of a napkin with Marsha today. So I, I, and I think we can get that to a place where we've got something that the board could use as a tool to inform ambulance rate discussions and budget, like, it would be a really helpful thing if we could just connect those dots. Anyway, but that's worth...
So we've had a lot of good discussion. Mike, you've heard the concerns. We look forward to you coming back and sharing with us what the firefighters want so that we can have that discussion. Hopefully, we'll have more fiscal analysis of all of that, that, you know, we can, we can make a good decision and provide that information back to you. While there's some discomfort with a multi-year agreement, I think there's some recognition at the same time. That's probably the best direction to go. So what is, what is our next step? You're going to have this conversation next week. And then when do we need to come back together, receive the information that you have for us, and then have some more discussion?
Way before February 21st.
Well, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's going to be probably early in January, right?
Yeah, or, you know, maybe between Christmas and New Year's, or, I mean, as early as we can. Because I think we want to keep, I mean, my philosophy going into this negotiation made it very clear to Mike. And I think this was before we got their initial proposal, which was not 22 pages of language changes. It was pretty concise. You know, because I thought this was going to be a drag-out session. My direction, at least to Mike, was I want to get to arbitration as fast as we can. If we have to pull arbitration this year, just do it. I don't want to have this be a drag-out like we were last year. You know, and I still have that philosophy. I don't want this to be a drag-out. So if we can get back in early January, I would hope we could do that.
And there's some flexibility in the dates depending on some things. But mediation's the week of the January 8th. Arbitration, which depending on the availability of arbitrators, would be the week of the January 15th or something. So if we're back, like we said, we had three days next week. And I think that we will have a good idea of what it would take to settle this. And that's why, as Mike said, either between Christmas and New Year's, which I'm available if you want to meet then, or first part right after Christmas or the New Year.
Brian, are you available like the 28th or 29th? Okay. Would you be avail, when are you available back in January then?
For context, what did we do last year? Because it was a pretty high number last year, wasn't it?
Seven percent.
Yeah, that's where I get heartburn sometimes. Because like seven seems like an honest attempt to try to move us in the direction. And then we talk about benefits of our 48 and stuff, and I just feel like we get no credit. And it just frustrates me in these talks because it feels like we're always just the bad guy. And that's where I get a little bristly sometimes with this. Just for whatever that's worth, but, I mean, I agree with Brian. I mean, I want to, I want to treat these people right and treat them fairly. But I'd like, I'd like to get credit for that. And if I never will, it's going to make, it just, it doesn't, you know, it makes it hard to want to do the right thing. I don't know, but it's not your fault.
It'll be helpful once we get some numbers. Okay. Any further discussion or questions? If not, do we have a motion to go out of closed session?
Some of them.
Second. We have a motion, a second discussion. Send a vote, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Evans.
Gish.
Yes.
DePhillips.
Yes.
Karen Feld.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
I get to vote now. How about Poggy Weaver?
Yes.
Poggy Weaver, I have to add you back there.
I just have to give you a hard time.
Okay, moving on to updates for the board. Presentation of the FY '25 budget.
So what you have in your packets and is a preliminary budget. And this does contemplate a 5% increase. And it also adds three personnel. So on the Johnston side, we were asked to provide a staffing plan for the next five years. So we gave that to Mike. A little bit different, and some of the council members heard this when we did the budget discussion the other morning with the finance committee. But instead of presenting like a level budget, and then here's all the requests additional, we were asked to put the requests in to see what it looks like altogether and then kind of go backwards if there has to be cuts. So this would be with a 5% and three extra personnel added to the budget. We're not asking for any action, but it's more or less just to kind of give people an idea of where it is at this point. So a couple of the things that changed were we added some legal expenses because between the Johnston budget and the Grimes budget, I only had $11,000 for legal fees. Now we are going to have to pay more of a retainer for Mike. And we also, I don't know how many years ago, we started actually taxing each department with legal expenses before it just all came out of one fund. And so anytime we have the city attorney review the 28E or anything like that, then we get charged for that. So the $11,000, I did not estimate was going to be enough based on, I mean, we spent way more than $40,000 last year between the two cities. But, so I had to put a number in there. So I'm estimating $40,000 for legal fees. Maintenance fees with bringing on the Grimes vehicles. We're probably going to be buying more windshield wipers and oil filters and those types of things that the mechanic will use and have on hand. And so I moved that another $4,000 to go from $8,000 to $12,000. And then I did move some money within lines and reduce some lines and add two lines, one under the fireside, one under the ambulance side for other contractual services so that we can track our contracts that we use to maintain equipment, like our medical equipment. We have a service contract and it's better, we felt it was better to track that separately in a different line and pulling money from different places that we were before. And then the same for our ladder testing, pump testing, SCBAs, to have that because those are really more of a contractual service-type thing that we're paying out of. And then revenues look like, in the budget, they look like they're going to be less. But part of that is that we're not doing this balance billing between Johnston and Grimes. And so those showed up as additional revenues on both cities. And so when you look at the total revenues for Grimes and the total revenues for Johnston added together, this new budget has less revenues because we're not balance billing each other. So, but overall, there is an increase and most of that is going to be into the wages. So again, no action needed this time. Once we get the valuations and we figure out what it's going to be, then you'll get the full budget because there may be some additional cuts to this depending on how we have to make that work with the funds available.
Chief, maybe you said this and I missed it. If I did, I apologize. The three positions that are being added, what are they and how much, how much will they cost?
So we've added, and again, because we don't know who we're going to hire, we added two in at the firefighter paramedic level and one at the EMT level. And I think that overall was like $300, some $1,000 when you add all their benefits and everything to the wages. So, and that's estimating that we start them at step three, which doesn't always happen. Sometimes we start them at step one, which is less. But so again, we have to, when we estimate, we try to estimate on the high side so that we don't end up short at the end of the year. So budget, so it's anticipated like the next meeting, we would have better sessions within the city, figure out where we need to be.
Any other questions, concerns? I don't see any, Chief.
Yeah.
Are we ready for the next item? Discussion of strategic planning dates.
So one of the things in the 28E does contemplate that the, one of the duties of the board is to participate in strategic planning. And so we have the retired fire chief from Clive kind of on contract. He's doing a couple of different things. He's helping with a culture study of the department, doing some interviews. He's also going to be helping us with scrubbing our data and getting better data and better reports out of our system. And then the third component would be with the contract that was authorized earlier this year to help with strategic planning or conduct strategic planning session. So my question for the board is, how do you want to do the strategic planning? Is it better to do two evenings? A, is it better to do a weekday? Is it better to do like a Saturday? And those are the kind of things that I think we need to try to figure out so then we can propose some dates back to you just through email and try to get something scheduled after the first of the year.
Are you looking at sometime during, during the month of January?
Probably the first quarter, yeah, January, February, somewhere. I don't know.
Do you have a handle at this point on the time commitment that's required? I mean, I kind of...
My guess would be somewhere in the 68, six to eight hours. Part of it, there's going to have, you know, there's going to be some educational part. So when we're talking about staffing levels, making sure that all the members understand, you know, what does it mean if we add more or what does it mean if we stay the same? But then our call volume goes up and then using some data to try to help educate and inform those decisions that you're going to have to make as far as what does it look like going forward on staffing levels? So in order to get that educational component, run some data by you and show you some projections and all that, by the time we go through that, have a lot of discussion, we're thinking six to eight hours, which that's why I'm asking. Is it better to do a couple of evening sessions? Or is, you know, do people want to commit a whole day? I know when Grimes does their strategic planning, Johnston's in the middle of doing their citywide strategic planning, and we're talking about a day, sometimes it's hard for people to find an entire day to do things during the week. Option might be a Saturday. Options may be two evening sessions to try to get, you know, two, three, or four-hour sessions to try to get it done that way.
I don't want to speak for Councilmember Burkhart, but I will tell you, you know, the planning, the strategic planning or that we're going through right now at the city of Johnston was, really had to work around his schedule in particular. So, you know, I would say you need to reach out to him and really find out what would work for him. But I'm going to guess it's going to be, it's going to be, you need nights and weekends unless you work around when schools in session.
I mean, listen, it's my job to be here.
And that's fine. And that's what, that's the feedback I'm looking for. Is if, if people would rather do two evening sessions to get it done, I just need some parameters so we can start looking at dates and throwing them out there.
I don't want a weekend.
I'm staff, so I gotta do whatever they say.
I don't want weekends. I actually don't want evenings, but I'm in the same boat as Brian.
Right.
I would find a way to make it work if it was one day.
Yeah, and...
This is my third personal day, thank you. But, but I, but yeah, I mean, if you give me enough advance warning and it's two evenings, I'll make it happen. I just, you know.
All right.
Are there particular evenings that work better?
I can't answer that. My wife's, my wife works evenings.
Monday and Tuesday or Wednesday, Thursday.
We're Tuesday nights for council.
Yeah, we're Tuesday nights for council. My wife works evenings, but her schedule's changing, so that's why I don't like evenings. So I can't answer that.
Okay.
I think you're just going to send out a doodle.
I'll start, yeah, I'll start trying to get some parameters probably based on your schedule and Brian's schedule and then see like when you have breaks, maybe that there might be some days available that you don't have school and then...
Yeah, I might want to dive in with you a little bit, Chief, to understand like what, what you anticipate for a process because that might shape my perspective a little bit on whether or not you call people in for an eight-hour block or does it make more sense to chop it up so that there's maybe time in between to react to whatever feedback you're getting?
Yeah, and I think that's something, maybe you and me and Rick and Mike, we can all kind of sit down and discuss the process.
Because the, the process itself might suggest something about the, the manner in which you bump the time together.
Absolutely. Perfect. Okay, we can do that.
We got a band concert.
All right. Well, thank you.
Losing members, Chief. We need to move faster.
Yep. All right.
Fire board on response model changes.
So one of the things we wanted to update everybody on is that with the three additional people that we were authorized to hire this summer, we were, we've changed our model. We used to have five people assigned to the middle station, one ambulance dedicated with two-person crew and a fire engine. Now that we've got the additional people, when nobody's on vacation, now we have enough each day to have two dedicated ambulances. So one in Station 37 in Grimes, one in Station 39 over here. And so then we are only staffing three in the middle and that engine responds going both directions. The other advantage that gives us is that when we drop down to four people in one of the two outside stations, if the first call's a medical call, which is more likely, then we still have two people there that can take a second medical call in that district or even come all the way across to the other district. So there's times when we've got all four ambulances, if we've got two people on vacation, we can really run a fourth-out medical call. Now, that engine's really busy chasing back and forth, but it's really increased our capabilities for those concurrent calls for a second out or a third out. So we just wanted, when I had talked to the management committee, the city administrators, they said that's something we should update, make sure the board understands too, that, that when we ask for those additional personnel, it's to give you a greater level of service. And that we've actually followed through with that and now we are developing, developing that greater level of service when we have the two outside stations staffed either with four or five people, so.
Any questions on that? Say none. Update on the new fire Station 37.
Okay, so the Grimes council has seen this, but I don't think anybody from Johnston has. So the site has been chosen where it says the Grimes Public Safety Center here in red. So this is out on county line. So this is farther west than the current station by not quite a mile. And so this is going to be a really good site because it's going to give us a lot of better coverage when we look at these two maps here, the current station. So the outlines in either red or yellow are a six-minute travel time. The solid lines in either red or yellow are a four-minute travel time. And we use the four and the six because there's supposed to be a one-minute time for the call to come in and dispatch to get us out the door, two minutes for us to get the call, get our gear on and get out the door. And so all of that time is seven minutes. And that's what we're looking at is that six to seven minutes of travel time altogether. And so as you can see with the current station, this darker yellow shows all the overlap between the drive time from Station 38 and from 37. If you look at the new location over here on the right, you can see that darker, solid lines are as much smaller, but there's still some overlap, which is really what we look for when we're talking about station placement. And so we feel it's still going to give good coverage to all of this area. It's just not going to have as much overlap, which really is what you want. So it's going to be a good location. We've been working with the architects. We got a good schematic design. There's going to be four bays. We're going to have mechanical rooms and the decon and gear storage and everything over on the one end of the station, across from the bay. Have a nice fitness area over here. It's going to have a training area and stairway where they can pull hose. It's going to have a mezzanine because one of the things that I wanted was to utilize the space as wisely as possible. And so having this mechanical room up above... to utilize the space as wisely as possible. And so having this mechanical room up above these rooms below, having storage, having an open area above the, the fitness room with a catwalk basically up here. So as they come up the stairs and pull hose into this training and storage area, they can do a lot of training in the station. Then on the other side of the station, a small vestibule, office conference room that can be shared with sheriff's department, a restroom for the public, a report room that we can share with the deputies as well. And then we have double doors or vestibules here so that we can keep the contaminants out of the station. EMS storage, a nice sized training room, IT, medium decon and laundry. The idea is that if they go to a fire, they come over here, take the gear off, wash their gear, come across here, take a shower and have some sweats and t-shirt and stuff that is there. So they're not taking any of those contaminants into the fire station. So this is kind of a modern design of what a lot of departments are doing now to minimize bringing those contaminants into the living quarters. Got a nice open day room and kitchen area. And then we have bunk rooms over here in kind of a suite configuration with three bunks and one shower room for each and then a set of lockers. So this is probably going to get staffed with five people initially so they can kind of spread out a little bit. If somebody doesn't want to sleep next to somebody that snores, they can move around to one of the other suites. But good design. We're feeling like we're going to get good prices. I think some of the, the prices on construction are starting to level out or come down. I know talking to John, the parks director over here, the bids they're getting back on the Crown Point addition are coming in less than estimate. And I know a lot of the construction estimates have been lower lately. So we're hoping that it all comes in good. It's in the, what we call design development stage now, but this is what it's going to look like. The four bays here, a nice looking entrance, saving costs by using tilt up concrete, but the things that they can do now to make it look, you know, not just big flat gray walls, but add texture and add color to it. And so we think it's going to be a really nice looking station and fit into the neighborhood over there. So. It's going to, what it's going to look like from the side, again, cost efficiency of using a sloped roof, using translucent panels to let light in, but it's not going to be windows that we got to wash or worry about replacing. And some of that texture again with the tilt up panels here and, and some window openings. So. Overall, we feel it's been, been a, a good process, got good architects and, and a good owner's rep over there. So. I think it's going to be a great addition.
I think we're excited about it in Grimes and super appreciative of the work that the fire department staff did with the design team to incorporate the feedback that the council gave them. I think we're pretty happy with the direction that's going. Thank you, chief.
Welcome.
Chief, you probably said this, when, when are you going out for bid?
Probably this spring. So we're in design development, so probably by February, we should have some actual costs so that then it can go. I mean, there's still several processes, but.
And you're hoping the construction will be complete?
About two years from now, really.
Now, what, didn't we say December 2025? Or did I make that up?
Yep. Yeah. Hopefully break ground late summer or early fall next year and then a little over.
It looks like it's going to be nice and I, you know, appreciate the location of it and, you know, making sure that we're getting the best use out of it. So.
Yep. Yeah. And I mean, that's the direction Grimes is going to grow in the future is Weston.
Any questions on that? If not, we have three items under the non-consent agenda. The first one, consider approval of resolution number F 23 001 approving the MOU, changing directives to policies, chief.
So currently in the current contract and the last actual couple of contracts, there's been what we term directives that how we do business. And their usually intention was they'd be short term and then eventually be replaced with a permanent policy or standard operating guideline. And because the current contract, because of the one year agreement kept some of the language in that we really were hoping that we could get changed. The union is agreed to change some of those directives to current policies so that they're updated, so they're actually in line with our operations as they currently are. And so that is the reason for the MOU because even if we do get a contract settled, that wouldn't start being effective until next July. And because it deals with vacations and, and how we do some of those things, the union has asked if we would entertain doing an MOU to update that language in the current contract. And so basically we're trying to update it so it matches our current policies and practices.
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve resolution number F 23 dash 001?
I'm moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please.
Jericho.
Yes.
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 Motion passed. Item 8B, consider resolution number F 23 dash 002, approving the fire formula.
So normally earlier in the year, it, it, the agreement says by October 30th, but we're running a little behind. We need to approve the fire formula. This is what we base everything off of for the next fiscal year. So it actually takes effect July 1. But as we're looking at the 25 budget, then this is what we need to base everything on as to which city will pay how much. And so one of the recommendations was because as the budget gets larger, you know, a two or three or five tenths of a percent can mean considerable dollars. And so in the past, it was always rounded up or down to the nearest whole number. But now the, the recommendation from the management committee is to use the percentages to tenths of a percent. And again, this is based on the latest estimated population from the U.S. Census Bureau for each city, the hundred percent valuation of property and the current city limits in square miles and then the total number of calls. And so this has shifted a little bit. The, the calls in Grimes shifted a little bit of a percentage this last time. And then the valuations kind of stayed similar, I guess. I think Grimes grew a little bit more. So the current formula is 62 38. And so now it's going to move to 61.3 to 38.7. And again, there's a resolution to approve this. Move us forward as far as budgeting for the next year.
Any questions?
Move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please.
Anderson.
Yes.
Ogie Weaver.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Jericho.
Yes. Motion passed. Item 8C, consider resolution number F 23 dash 003, a resolution approving ambulance rates.
So the last meeting, we talked about ambulance rates. We have not raised the rates since 2018. We have a current, excuse me, schedule. So every year, one of the agencies sends out a request for everybody to update their, their rates. So we get this every year that shows the average rates. And we have talked about, you know, different methods, looking at the tax implications on the budget. The management committee, we decided that the best proposal would be to use this average rate down here. That's the average of all the different agencies. So some of them are fire based, some of them are volunteers, some of them are private, some of them are hospital. And obviously the private and hospitals have the highest rates. But as we look at our G E M T, which are a ground emergency medical transport, the federal program that we get a reimbursement from the federal government on, the costs that we use through that cost report come out about $2,400 is what our actual costs are. So when you look at the average down here of 834 and 1,009 and 1436, those are still way less than what our actual cost is to provide the service. Then we looked at some projections and what I got from our billing company shows that if we were to implement these new rates based on the statewide average, then we would realize very conservatively about $83,597 in revenue for the district. And so the thought was if we were to only go at Clive's rate, then we would lose about a hundred dollars per call. So the recommendation is, and the resolution was prepared, that we adopt the statewide average and then on an annual basis on July 1, we would just adjust to that statewide average for the emergency, emergent type calls. So is there any questions or discussions about that?
Any questions, concerns?
Move approval?
Oh, wait, wait. I do have a question about this financial assistance form.
Yes. So the financial assistance form, there is one here that was from a private company. I asked West Des Moines, I thought that they had their own policy. They said, no, they're working on it, but they gave me this as an example. So the one thing that I did not like about this is they request that if you put, put in for financial assistance, that you include your bank statement, your pay stubs, your W-2 forms, your federal income tax and all these. I thought that was an awful lot to ask right up front. So my proposal, which we're not voting on, is not part of the resolution, would be to change that up, modify it and say, please send a letter stating the reason you're requesting financial assistance. And then the following documentation may be requested if applicable for you and your spouse with your application. So that if we have questions, then we could ask. But I'm also putting in here that in red, financial assistance asks applicants may also demonstrate they're ineligible for Medicaid, which came from that other one. And that patients that are not eligible for financial assistance may also request a payment plan to pay for services over time. So in the last couple of years, the only people we've had ask for some sort of relief when we have said, can you make payments? And they're like, yeah, you mean I don't have to pay a thousand dollars upfront? No. If you can make a payment plan, we'll work it out. And if it takes you a year to pay it off, they're, they've always been willing to do that. Everybody has said, yeah, if I can make payments, I'm happy to do that. And so I think that was my goal was to try to steer people towards that. And then have them basically tell us why they need assistance. And then if we need to verify, then we can always ask for them to provide documentation later. But the majority of people in the last couple of years have just said, no, I can make payments. And say, you need to put all these documents up front and we don't need to run them through the wringer, I guess, to, to show that up front. So. I don't think we need to, I mean, we can discuss this at a later date. My goal was to be able to get ambulance fees increased and start them on July or January 1 and then update them every year. So.
And, 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 and that's good, chief. I just have a, a comment that I want to share with you as you're thinking about making updates or changes to what we have in front of us. What struck me is the, the different terminology that is used in the form that is provided here. We talk about financial assistance. We talk about discounts. And then we also talk about charitable service. I think we need, need to use one term.
Term. Okay. Perfect.
And I prefer financial discount because that's what we're actually doing rather than, I mean, financial assistance suggests to me, we're giving them something. Discount, what we're actually doing is providing a discount.
Okay. Perfect. I like that.
Staying away from, you know, calling it a charitable service. Some people probably would not react to that. The only other thing is I'm glancing down through it again. Under list, income for family from wages for farm or self-employed. I just wonder why we're kind of pulling out farm from other kinds of self-employed.
And again, I just took this from that other company. But yeah, we can certainly move that, remove that as well.
Since I'm a farmer now, I would be treated like everybody else.
But that's not what we're taking up right now.
No, no, no.
No, this was just for discussion and direction to bring back later time.
I just wanted to get my comments out there.
Yep, absolutely.
Before I get them.
That gives me direction for the next, next meeting. So.
Any, any further questions or comments? Again, what we're voting on is the change in ambulance rates. Any concerns there? Seeing none. Does Board Member Evans have a motion?
Moving.
Second. Have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please.
Ogie Weaver.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Phillips.
Yes.
Jericho.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Item nine, upcoming meeting dates and locations. It's like their alternative at this point.
Alternative. And we had picked, I believe, the third Wednesday of the month as our meeting date. This one was moved just because we wanted to have that discussion with Mike before up to the week before. So we could have that discussion before for direction. But otherwise, the third Wednesday of the month is what's contemplated. And again, we may have to be flexible if there becomes conflicts or something. But I just wanted to put all those out there so you have them for the next year. We will send out calendar invites as well. But.
Oh, chief, I've clicked off of the site. What is the next meeting date?
February 21st.
But we're likely going to have a meeting.
We'll probably have a meeting.
Sometime in January, early January.
Clarity on the negotiations.
Any comments on that? Questions? Any other business? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'm a adjourned.
Second.
Motion is second. On favor, say aye.
How do you like the format of board docs? I know it's new to you.
Yeah, that was great. It worked well for me. Thank you.
All right. Good. Thank you.